Hi, I'm Gene Proce with the League of Women Voters of the Houston area. And welcome to Conversations with the Candidates. Today, we'll be talking with candidates from Pasadena who will be coming up for an election. The election, the general election, will be May 4th. The main election will be May 4th. Early voting begins April 22nd, in just a few days after the holiday, and runs until the 30th. And that's, all those voting times are 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. With me today, as we, before we meet the candidates, I want to introduce Gracie Garces from Baker Ripley. Gracie, tell us a little bit about what you do and what Baker Ripley does.
Sure. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Gracie Garces, and I'm the Director of Community Engagement at Baker Ripley. Baker Ripley is a local nonprofit organization that has been working in and around neighborhoods here in Harris County since 1907. We exist, and we're committed to helping our neighbors earn, learn, and belong. And we do that through a wide variety of programs and services, from immigration to youth summer programs, after-school programs. Specifically, though, in my world, we do community and civic engagement. We're always very excited to partner with organizations like the League of Women Voters. So, we're very excited to be here. Thank you for inviting us to be part of this. We really are committed and dedicated to making sure that every single person in the Harris County region, specifically this evening in Pasadena, have an opportunity to participate in the civic process, regardless of where they are in their eligibility for voting. There's always a way to get involved, whether it's knocking on doors, making phone calls, meeting the candidates. You can always talk to them regardless of whether or not you are a current voter. So, tonight, we're really hoping to allow some of our neighbors back at home in Pasadena to get to know some of the candidates, and hopefully take part in the process somehow, whether it be volunteering or casting their ballot.
Well, thank you very much for being here, and we look forward to this conversation we're about to have. I want to introduce one other person who'll be asking some of the questions tonight, and that is Mr. Archie Gale. Archie is a student at the University of Houston Downtown. He's a student in the honors program. But tell us a little bit about what else you do in addition to the honors program.
I'm a creative writing major with a minor in film studies. I am the poetry editor for DUHD's literary magazine, The By Your Review. And we have been active in our community for, since the 1980s. Most recently, we published our prison issue, which included prison submissions from all over the United States. This semester, we are working on the feminist issue, which will be printed and out in bookstores in late May.
Okay, so that's coming up. So, you stay very busy, I know.
Yes, sir.
I also want to thank, off-camera, some of your colleagues are helping us tonight with some of the logistics and operations. We have Alfredo Maldonado, Imi Soto Garcia, and Carlos Huerto, who are off-camera, and they'll be escorting the candidates in tonight. And we want to thank them, and thank you for being on the show this evening.
Thank you for inviting me.
So, we're going to talk to the candidates who are coming up for the Pasadena City Council election. And we're going to start with candidate who is right here on my right, Thomas Scheinben for Council Seat District H. Tell us a little bit about yourself, please.
Yes, Gene. First of all, I'd like to thank y'all for inviting me tonight, and I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on. It's very much appreciated to give our citizens the opportunity to meet us. So, thank you very much. I've married for 34 years. My lovely wife, Bonnie, I have two children and three grandchildren that we just adore and appreciate. I've grown up and have lived in Pasadena for approximately 45 years. I have worked in Pasadena off and on for a little over 30 years. And I'm very active in my community. I'm active in my church, and I love helping people throughout our community. As far as a volunteer, I've coached Little League Baseball. I've coached girls softball and boys' basketball as well.
So, you've been very active in the community. I've got a question for you. You are the incumbent right now. You're sitting, you're holding the office. What is it that made you want to run in the first place?
Well, for approximately 10 years, I've been involved with my community. And over that 10 years, our daughter was going to college, our son was getting married, they were having children. And, you know, with some of the issues that were coming up within our city and our state government, you look at yourself and you say, "Well, I want to make a difference, but if I don't step out and do something, I will look back and say, 'would've, could've, should've.'" And I feel like I bring a unique perspective to the city of Pasadena. I have an understanding of our community, our residents, our needs, and I've been able to focus in on that and really make a difference in my district and District H.
Thank you. Councilman, again, thanks for joining us. So, you talked about your history, 44, 45 years in Pasadena is quite a while, so kudos to you. I know you have, you're invested in the community. You talked about being, participating in some of the youth programs, basketball, et cetera. Pasadena has grown, it's changed quite a bit over the years for the better, with a lot of economic growth. Census 2020 is a major conversation right now. As you know, the number of congressional seats, as well as electoral college votes, are dependent on the population count. We want to make sure that there is a complete count across the county, but specifically, I'm really interested in kind of hearing you talk about what you think City Council's role can be, or what it is, in terms of ensuring that all Pasadena residents are counted in Census 2020.
Great question, because as a council, we oversee and we legislate where our tax dollars go. And be it my district or other districts, we have to look out for what's best for the city of Pasadena. And we want to ensure that every single resident is counted, because when we count every single resident, that ensures that we receive the federal tax dollars that we are supposed to get, and that equates to helping people one-on-one. And when we can help people one-on-one, we can make a difference in their lives. And we want to encourage families to come to Pasadena and grow, and we want to ensure that families realize that Pasadena is going to provide those services, be it police, fire, educational opportunities to grow within our city limits, but also, too, to grow within our local college systems as well. Within Pasadena, we have San Jacinto Junior College. We also have the University of Clear Lake. We also have U of H Downtown and U of H Central Campus there on 45. So, we want to encourage folks to register, to be counted, and to have the representation that they deserve.
Thank you.
Archie.
I absolutely love your focus on families. It's very important to centralize our communities, and I love your values. And to a member of the younger generation and those of us who are becoming of age to vote, it's very important that we, that we focus on families. And I love to know, what are some of your major concerns for your district, and how will you seek to address those concerns?
Some of the major concerns for my district, being in District H, is that we need to provide opportunities for young folks. Infrastructure and flood mitigation are, you know, very high on the list, safety and security, as far as from our police and fire departments. However, we need to realize that our young people, they're our future, and we cannot hold our young people back. We need to give them opportunities to serve within our community. We need to give them opportunities to be on committees. We need to give them opportunities to be on commissions. And we need to allow them to have a voice in their future. If they can't have a voice in their future, they're going to want to take it back in and not participate. Participation is very important to me, and I would love to see a group of young people that care about our city, our county, our state, and our nation, to rise up and be the young people that we can count on, because I respect y'all. I respect people, and our young people sometimes don't get the respect that they deserve. And we just need to give them opportunities, either partnering with businesses, partnering with senior adults, or partnering with our educational systems, to allow them to contribute back into our communities and to grow our communities.
I'm going to, we have a map of Pasadena and the election districts. And can you describe District H? And then I want to, I'm going to ask you a follow-up question right after that, but describe District H for us.
District H in Pasadena is one of the most diverse districts within the city. District H is approximately 14 square miles. District H runs from Fairmont Parkway, Beltway 8, all the way down to San Jacinto College, the Convention Center, and all the way down to Nassau Road 1, to Kima and El Carey and that area there. So, basically, I have roughly 20,000 voters in my district. I have approximately 15 to 18 homeowners associations in my district. I have El Carey, El Hardine. We actually have a beach in Pasadena, in El Hardine. It's one of our best-kept secrets, I guess, but it's a beautiful place down there. Also have the area along, Armon Bio is within my district, a beautiful location there that has a ecological system that needs to be maintained and protected and guarded. And then I have communities, Kirby Bend, Kirby Lake, Kirby Place, University Park, right next door to University of Houston and Clear Lake. And a lot of folks don't understand this or realize this, part of the University of Houston Clear Lake is actually in Pasadena. So, we have two college systems within my district, San Jacinto College and the University of Houston Clear Lake, a portion of it.
So, what do you think are the concerns that district faces the most?
The concern that we face the most is flood mitigation. We recently have reached out, and our Assistant Public Works Director, Mark Gardamol, reached out and applied for FEMA money, and we received $105 million in FEMA grant money. And part of our city right now, I believe its districts A, B, C, and D have received a small portion of that, about $35 million. And then the rest of the districts will receive the rest of the portion of the money. But you have to realize something in Pasadena, and with what Harris County is trying to achieve with flood mitigation. Number one, we saw the tremendous tragedy of Harvey, where all the water was released and came through the west side of Houston, flowed through Houston through our bio system. And you have to realize, it flows through Pasadena and Baytown to get to the bay. So, what the flood mitigation money is going to help us do, it's going to help us with the canal system and the bio system to straighten those out, to ease the flow of water, because the more curves you have in a bio, the less, or the more friction you have to back up water. So, we need to expedite the water flow from the west side of town or downtown through our city and out to the bay. Flood mitigation is huge. Also, too, we're faced with traffic concerns as well. 146 and TexDOT has addressed the issue on our Kima side and our La Porte side. And with our port growing and the Port of Houston being our major economic engine, we see a lot of industrial traffic. And I believe that we need to focus on our commercial motor vehicle department in Pasadena to ensure that we monitor the traffic, the truck traffic for container trucks, to provide safe equipment flowing through our city so that we don't have injuries because of documents as far as drivers and documents as far as load permits and safety permits for the trucks themselves.
I wanted to follow up on the comments you made to Archie, and then the comments that you made regarding the local college system. So, about 35% of Pasadena residents do not have a high school diploma. And moreover, when we talked to some of our neighbors as part of a survey, many of them were not familiar with the local community college structure or model, specifically revolving around San Jacinto College. Baker Ripley is looking to expand programming that creates an educational pipeline connecting Pasadena residents to actual, from education to workforce. What are your thoughts on this specific issue? And what do you, what kind of ideas do you have on how the council, City Council in Pasadena, can support these efforts to ensure that we're actually growing our workforce?
I think that's a great question. Actually, that's been something that I've talked about probably for about the last six to eight months, is our workforce and education. Our Pasadena Independent School District, we have a brand-new facility. It's a career and technology high school. And one of the things that has happened over the years is we've had a promotion of everyone has to go to college, and that's a fallacy. We have jobs that are available right now in the workforce for plumbers, electricians, insulators, welders, that provide very good incomes for families. And our students that go through those programs, they're not saddled with student loans and student debt. Now, they are certificate programs, yes, but we need to encourage and make available these programs, the information out there. And we need to partner with, say, you know, Ripley House. We need to partner, again, our local unions are a part of that as well. And our school district needs to take a more proactive stance on educating students as early as the sixth, seventh, eighth grade, to be able to let kids have hand-on, hands-on opportunities to develop that. Because if they can put their hands on, you know, say, a welding machine in the sixth or seventh grade, you know, that might spark something right there that says, "I can do this." And have an adult there and have a mentorship program that's available for them to tap into, and have career and technology avenues within our school district. And our school district has done a good job of that here in the last several years. And I think the focus is being put back on that hands-on education and those teachable moments that are for kids. And, you know, yes, we do need doctors and lawyers and scientists. Yes, we do. But we also, too, need plumbers, electricians, and, you know, insulators, and, you know, process technician workers, and, you know, instrumentation workers in our plants, because look where we live. We live on the Port of Houston. It's an economic engine for the whole United States. Actually, it's an economic engine for the world. We're fifth in tonnage. We're number one for aviation fuel, you know, for plastics. We're number three in the world producing plastics. So, we have a lot of opportunities for students throughout our region.
Thank you.
I believe trade schools are immensely important. It's immensely important for our young adults to learn that, to learn several opportunities for financial, for financial fruitfulness. Well, I have a question relating to education, and it's also connected to trade schools. Do you support charter schools? Do you, do you agree with charter schools? Because trade schools and charter schools, they often go hand-in-hand. I know they, back in the, I believe 1980s and 1990s, there were a lot of charter schools and a lot of high schools in general with trade schools, and that has disappeared. But it's very important for the young people to understand, to learn, just to learn trades.
You know, that's, that's another good question, too, and I appreciate y'all's questions tonight. Charter schools, I believe, are important because they give choice. And once we start to limit choice, we start to limit people's dreams. And when we limit people's dreams, we limit possibilities. And who are we to say that everyone has to go through one typical program? Let's give our young people opportunities. You know, I believe that Christian schools are important. I believe that charter schools are important for the performing arts. Houston has a wonderful program for the Performing Arts School. You know, give young people the opportunity, instead of just saying, "Okay, you've got to go to college." And a lot of young people say, "Okay, well, I want to become a doctor, lawyer, pharmacist, this, that, or the other." But they really don't understand until they're getting their third or fourth year in college, what they want to do. So, they've already wasted two, three, four years. They've built up student debt. Let them, you know, learn at a young age that they have opportunities, and then they can develop those, and people can nurture that, and folks will come into the system prepared and eager to take the next steps.
One last question, about a minute left. Your elevator speech, why should people vote for you?
Well, folks should vote for me because I'm a hands-on council member. I have, from day one, two years ago, I give out my personal cellphone number to everyone, I've done that for two years, and I respond back normally within 30 minutes to an hour, and I have a proven track record of getting things done. We've laid over two and a half miles of sidewalks. We've done almost $200 million in infrastructure. We've acquired $105 million in flood mitigation money. We've funded multiple buildings, a new Fire Station 8, about $8 million, a new municipal courthouse, about $13 million. We're taking down our old Pasadena State Building. It's going to be imploded. And we're having a new police and fire training facility at about $17 million. And, you know, I see Pasadena moving forward, and for the last two years, I've been making every effort, and my record shows that I support Pasadena.
Thomas Scheinben, thank you so much. I'm Gene Proce for the League of Women Voters. Gracie Garces with Baker Ripley. Archie Gale. We all want to thank you very much and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's a pleasure.
Hi. I'm Gene Proce with the League of Women Voters of the Houston area. I have with me two other people who are going to be asking questions of our candidates for the Pasadena City Council election that's upcoming. The general election, is that right to say, the general election, is May the 4th. But early voting begins April 22nd and runs through the 30th. Voting, of course, all day, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And the nice thing is, is that beginning this year, you don't have to go to a specific polling place to vote. Well, you have to go to a polling place, but you don't have to go to your assigned polling place, right? If you're working in a location, you can go to another one and vote. So, that makes it easier, and we hope that more people will exercise that constitutional right they have to go out and vote. So, with me is Gracie Garces from Baker Ripley, and Archie Gale from the University of Houston Downtown, honor students. And we want to welcome a candidate from District B, Steve Halverson.
Hello, how are you?
How are you?
I'm doing fine today.
Well, welcome, and thank you for coming in and visiting with us today. We're going to talk a little bit about your position, who you are, and why people should vote for you. So, the first thing I want to ask you is, tell us and the viewers a little bit about yourself.
Okay, I'm Steve Halverson. I started in Houston, actually in Galveston area. I was working at UTMB in Galveston as a research scientist. So, that's how I came here to be in the community. I also was in the military before then, so I served in Germany. And later, also participated in the reserve military as well when I got to UTMB in Galveston. I was there for seven years, and then I went to Baylor College of Medicine, where I work right now. And right now, I'm a research director out there. I moved to Pasadena area 21 years ago, and I married my wife that lives there. She was raised in Pasadena. So, she's kind of what brought me to the community 21 years ago. So, I've enjoyed living in the community, and as I've, you know, aged and became a little bit more involved in management where I work, I also would like to do some things in the community as well. So, that's why I put my name into the, to the arena, to do a little bit of politics in the community. So, most of my background has been research, science, and more of a laboratory work. In the military, I had some leadership roles and leadership experiences, so that I was able to take my leadership roles in the community with that, and also apply it to the community that I'm working in right now, with District B North Side of Pasadena. So, that's how I came to be here in politics.
Great. Gracie?
Mr. Halverson, welcome. Thank you for joining us. So, Baker Ripley and the League of Women Voters are committed to ensure, committed to ensuring that all Pasadena residents are taking part in the civic process, right? So, you talk about your leadership in the military, how you have been involved in the community. Can you talk a little bit about what you think you'd be able to do on City Council to ensure that neighbors are able to affect change and to realize the visions in working with potentially you on City Council, to actually realize the visions that they have for their specific neighborhoods?
Well, one of the things I did early on, when I got to Pasadena, I was invited to go to some community group meetings, Texas Organizing Project. And one of the things that, that they engaged us with was, when we met, they said, "Well, what are you interested in your community?" So, one of my interests was flooding. Another part of the group was also communicating with the law enforcement within Pasadena. The north side of Pasadena is Hispanic and Spanish-speaking groups within that area. So, our community group went to the City Hall. And one of the ways we can, we engage is we did a little bit of canvassing in the neighborhood. So, what we did was door-knocking, and that was my introduction to actually kind of a campaigning kind of mode, is we got to talk to the neighbors. I got to speak with folks in the neighborhood that would tell me what their focus and interests were. So, I would say as, when I go into office, we should continue some similar things in city government, where we're open to the community. We provide translation for folks that, you know, have, you know, language skills that they need a little assistance with. The Baker Ripley Center has been good in our community in Fairmont. So, you guys have done a very excellent job of communicating and then having an open door to the community. I see a lot of good things that come out of there. Also, there's training programs that you're offering, and I do believe we can partner with Baker Ripley, also with the city, and continue these types of outreach in the community.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Pasadena is home to many oil industry jobs. What role, if any, do you think City Council can play in helping Pasadena residents obtain necessary training credentials to apply for these jobs?
Well, we always have to be open to our local university programs. So, San Jack has definitely been a good partner within the community, to have trade skills open for people to have training. The city government can bring in folks to kind of communicate, bring in San Jack leadership, have them come speak at our City Council meetings, and offer those up. They do a Tuesday meeting, every Tuesday. We can get speakers to come out, and they can speak on behalf of San Jack in the local education outreach programs that we have in our communities. So, I think that would actually be a good thing to do for our community.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I've got a little map that I put up here earlier of the districts. And can you describe District B?
District B, we have, I believe it's around 80% Hispanic community. We have solid middle-class folks. We have plant workers, we were talking about before. We have your general labor, people working at McDonald's. It's a very diverse community. Like I said, 80% Hispanic. We have a very large portion of our community that are blended families, I call them, where you have permanent residents that will be the, maybe the, an older... you have permanent residents that will be the, maybe the, an older parent that has come to the United States. And then you have families and children who are now voting in those families. So a lot of times when I'm out block walking, talking to the community, I have one of my literatures in Spanish and the other in English. And I found, I didn't think I was actually going to use as much Spanish because voters generally speak English, but what I found is the parent will answer the door first and there might be a 28-year-old voter in the home. And if this last cycle, we saw a lot of 20-year-olds and youth getting engaged in politics, but they may not be engaged at the city level. So the parents would actually read the literature in the Spanish version and they say we give it to their children and so they could read it. So that's one of the profiles of our community. We have solid middle-class homes. We also have some of the lower-income areas too, where houses are around $50,000 or less in other parts of my community. So I try to outreach to the centralized areas within our community, the seniors. We have a senior, a large senior group within our community who are senior Anglos and we have a youth, mostly Hispanic, community now. And they're fixing their homes up, they're making the area look nice. So when they're fixing their homes up, what you had before was a large Anglo plant worker population. We have a large Hispanic plant worker population because they actually have a lot of folks that work at the plants. It's basically similar to the past. So the folks are still working at the plants, just changed a little bit.
So let me ask you a follow-up question to that. You've talked about some of the issues that your district faces, flooding, obviously.
Yes, definitely.
Also, the demographics, a largely Hispanic district.
Yes.
And some of the problems, some of the concerns, some of the needs that go along with that. What do you think as a city council member you can do to address some of those issues?
Well, definitely the flood mitigation issues, we can keep the dialogue and communication open with that. Early on, when I identified my issue for the community stuff that we were doing, flooding was my issue. I launched a boat, I was ferrying some kids across the, they had to park, the parents had to park and they'd get the kids and we'd kind of pull them across the street with a little small boat. So flooding's been an issue since Allison. That's what got me involved first. And Harvey, I saw more flooding. Actually, you have 50 inches of rain. So areas that I traditionally would see flooding expanded out into larger areas within my district. Little Vince Bayou flooded and it hadn't flooded in the center. We're talking about the more central part of my area, which is Queens neighborhood is one of my areas. And Mount Vernon, the Queens area around Little Vince Bayou flooded and it had not flooded before. So those are some of the things we're kind of focusing on and that we need to look at in our community.
In 2017, the Houston Chronicle published an article that stated, "Texas Entrepreneurs Are Both Younger and Older Than the National Average." What role do you think entrepreneurs play in the Pasadena economy? And what, if anything, could you or would you do on city council to ensure that entrepreneurs have the resources that they need to thrive?
Okay, in our area, we have a large Hispanic entrepreneurship. We actually thrive in that arena. We have a lot of taquerias, we have a lot of businesses that are all doing very well. They do struggle sometimes, I think, staying in business. And I believe just, we want to keep them in business. We had a little, a small restaurant in our community that just recently went out of business. It was servicing the senior community and the Hispanic community because they had kind of like a country-style meal. It was sad to see it go away because it actually brought a lot of folks to the community and it seems like we need to help those folks to stay in business and to keep continuity with our vendors and our entrepreneurs in our area. So we can always do well, Spanish Chamber of Commerce, we probably do that as well in our area would be greatly beneficial. So that's what we kind of need in our communities.
Is there not one?
I believe there is. I don't know how active it is right now, but I think we could start looking into that and maybe pushing them kind of to help out the North Pasadena entrepreneurs that we have.
Okay.
Thank you.
In recent years, we've seen an influx of young voters, especially at the United States campaign level. It's very difficult for the average voter to come out for general city-wide elections and statewide elections. What would you do as councilman to increase the young voter population or get the word out about the fact that we can vote on April 22nd?
Yes, April 22nd starts early vote. One way we do it when we're out canvassing in our neighborhoods, you know, Beto and there was a lot of engagement around him, around his campaign. And we're seeing that at the door when we're talking to folks. I actually am seeing a lot of 21 to 30-year-old folks that are on our list when we go out to communicate with our voters. That's new. But if they need to vote like two or three times in a row to stay engaged, so they become, you know, continual voters. So we do that in our communities all the time. Before I ran for office, I was helping a lot of different candidates out. I've helped out Lena Hidalgo, we've helped out Adrian Garcia, folks like that in our communities. So what we need to do at the city level, which is kind of different because you're right, we're up on April 22nd, that's not November. People are normally kind of focusing on November elections. So we're trying to focus them back to kind of these off-cycle elections where we don't get a lot of energy around these kind of elections. Communicating with the youth, a lot of seniors vote in these kind of elections because they're more like localized and the dates and times are a little different. So they kind of know to vote, but we need to keep them engaged, keep the youth engaged. After November, you still have elections. And I think that even for me, when I started block walking and communicating, I didn't realize that there was a May election or an April election. Then there's a March election for primaries and folks just kind of think about the presidential. But there's other elections that focus and affect our local, outside your front door is city council. So that's what a lot of the young folks need to know is that that road outside, that trashcan that's outside your door, all those things are local and they're affected by the city council members and the mayor of the city. So.
It's fantastic.
Educating them is, I think, another part too.
Isn't it very important to educate the young population as to how to change their own community? It's fantastic.
And I've had some good conversations at the door with younger voters. So the younger voters, a lot of times will say, I didn't even know we had city council races. And you actually came to my door and talked to me and I'm going to vote for you. And so I'll get positive feedback from folks when we actually do talk to them. So.
So Census 2020 is a big topic of discussion right now. As you know, the population count really does determine the number of congressional seats. It determines electoral college votes as well as determining how much, if any, public dollars go into a community. County Judge Lena Hidalgo, as well as Mayor Sylvester Turner on the 1st of April, committed to doing whatever they needed to do to make sure we had an accurate count, a complete count across the county. The mayor, obviously, in Houston. Can you talk a little bit about what you think you might be able to accomplish as a city councilman to ensure that Pasadena residents, every single one of them, is counted?
Well, one of the things you always do in a city council meeting that you have the opportunity to do is you have the opportunity to announce things when you're sitting up there. So we get a few minutes each council meeting to get up and talk. And what you can do is announce those events as they're coming into the community. If you see a census worker in your neighborhood, don't be afraid, open your door. All they're doing is statistical counting, they're not going to harm you. So I do believe that communicating and being friendly about that and also just representing the community as a leader myself, just to say, hey, we're just trying to get statistical numbers. We're not trying to do anything harmful to the community. And I do believe that when you do create a friendly, open environment and you could tell folks what's going on, I think you get a little bit more cooperation. We're going to have the census workers out, that happens every 10 years. So I think that it shouldn't be a surprise that we're going to be out, you know, just getting numbers. It's all we're doing. So I think those are very important to get the accurate counts for health reasons, for a lot of different federal dollars that come to the city itself to help out the community. So I do believe that's important.
Okay.
And yes, thank you.
So we've got a few minutes left. Why should people vote for you? What is the message you want to get out?
Well, one of the things about me is I'm accessible, I'm transparent. When somebody either emails me or calls me on the phone, I'm going to answer the phone. I want to do things for the community in a genuine manner. I do want to be open. One of my focuses has always been in the community, understanding that my community is Hispanic and it is Spanish-speaking in a good, large number. We need to be open for that community to be successful. So if they're successful, we're going to be a successful community. So I always want to keep that dialogue open with all my neighbors in my community. I want them to be happy about where they live and I want them to be welcome in our communities. So one of the things too that I would like to do, we sometimes have problems with the police communicating with some of our neighbors and I want to keep community policing or kind of bring it back a little bit. I've talked about my last campaign is that we had some communication problems within the community and when we do a little bit of bridging with the police and with the community, I think we do better. They're not so fearful when they see the police in our communities. So we want a friendly environment, someplace people want to live. I see a lot of folks in my neighborhood, they fix their homes up. You go into some communities and they're very blighted and they just let things fall apart. That's not what happens in District B. District B people do repair their homes. And it also encourages me, my wife and I, we just had our house remodeled. So we're very excited. She lived there, she was raised and born in Pasadena, 40-some years, and now we've just remodeled her home. She's very happy. So she's also my campaign manager. So I'm going to put a plug in for Jennifer Halverson and she's helping on my District B race. So that's the other part that keeps me there is my wife and her family are very, very nice and I enjoy living in Pasadena. And I would like to stay here. This is a great, great community. It's close to work. I live in the, I work in the medical center and it's not very far from where I work. So it's, the commute's not very stressful. So it's a great community and I think we can continue to improve it and we can always continue to improve. So that's why I'm excited about being in Pasadena. I enjoy my city, so.
Okay. Any closing thoughts or comments, questions?
No. Hopefully you've gotten our invitation to come out to our Art of the Vote event.
Yes, I did.
Partnership with the Museum of Fine Arts.
Thank you for inviting me to Art of the Vote. I went there last, two years ago, I went to the Art of the Vote and I'll enjoy going there again. It brings up different kinds of dialogues that you're not quite thinking about at the time, so it opens conversations.
It's a non-traditional candidate forum, if you will, but it's roundtable discussions led by youth docents that are trained by the Museum of Fine Arts Houston docents. And the conversations revolve around art pieces that are printed, but that are actually exhibited right now at the Museum of Fine Arts Houston. So we're really excited about it. It allows for neighbors to get to know the candidates and their neighbors, right, on a totally different level. So, thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being here. Thank you all.
Steve Halverson, thank you very much. Good luck in the election. Once again, I want to remind everybody about the elections coming up in Pasadena and several other small communities too. We're focusing on Pasadena today, but you know, a lot of times people, as you were mentioning earlier, in these off-term, off-presidential elections, people forget about them or think, you know, they're not important. But as you pointed out, for these local elections, what your city council members do affects you directly while, you know, in national, there's a big filter. So the elections start April 22nd. The early elections, April 22nd through April the 30th, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And the big election is on May the 4th. We'll be back with another candidate in just a few minutes. Thank you. Hi, I'm Gene Probst of the League of Women Voters of the Houston area and we're having our conversation with the candidates here on Houston Media Source. With me today, we have Gracie Garcia from Baker Ripley. We have Archie Gail from the University of Houston Downtown Honors Program. And we're talking to candidates for Pasadena City Council. Once again, the early voting begins April 22nd and the big election is May the 4th. And as I've said with the other candidates, I want to remind people in case they're just tuning in, is that this, for the first time, Harris County has instituted during the voting, you don't have to go to a specific place, you can go to any available poll. And you can find those, those are on the website. Actually Pasadena government website has information on the elections, so you can find some there. With us now is candidate for District C, Mr. Don Harrison. Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
We're very pleased that you agreed to be on the show with us tonight and we'd like to start off by asking you to tell viewers about yourself. Who is Don Harrison and let us know a little bit about your background.
Okay, sir. Thank you for the League of Women Voters for having me here. It's always a pleasure and for you all to take your time and interview me. And it's a special occasion and we'll see what we can do. But I'm Don Harrison. I'm running for re-elected city council District C. I've been elected for 24 years and I'm a retired real estate review operator from the United States Army Corps of Engineers, Galveston District, and my expertise was in flood control. And I'm married 58 years, been living in my district 69 years in the same district. And I have two children, Renee and Ronnie. I have a bachelor's degree in business with a major in management and I'm a Vietnam-area veteran. And I'm proud to serve Pasadena.
Well, thank you very much. That's quite a lengthy time in the district and in Pasadena. So we're going to appreciate what you have to say to us tonight.
Absolutely. 69 years is quite a long time. I'm sure you have seen Pasadena change quite a bit. It's obviously grown economically and geographically as well. The Census 2020 is upon us. It's a major topic of discussion within recent days, within recent months. As you know, the population count is going to determine the number of congressional seats that Pasadena gets, the number of electoral college votes, and moreover, about $8.8 billion federal dollars will go into states annually for various public services. Can you talk to us a little bit about what you think you, as a council member, can do on city council to ensure that every single Pasadena resident is going to be counted in Census 2020?
Well, I'm aware of the different censuses, this and that. I've been through several of them myself. Every 10 years, we do a census count and locally, though, I begin to see a lot of gerrymandering. It's who's in power, they will try to gerrymander the one they want out and say, dead me. And my district was further east and it has more Hispanics and so they're, and the state level, they've had lawsuits, this and that. Some of those not cleared up. And I keep up with the battles in our new congressional district for the Hispanics and goes back and forth. So I see too much gerrymandering in these districts and it's party in power, whoever it really wants to increase their congressional delegates. But the question was, how can I help Pasadena? Well, I watch the gerrymandering because they did that. They went to the voters after that and went to file a federal lawsuit. And instead of eight single-member district council members, it would be six council members and two at large. And the two at large were elected from a different area that's a population that they voted. So it was dilution of Hispanic vote. And I believe in one person, one vote, should have that one vote counted, no matter where they are. And I've expressed that all my life. And the lawsuit was filed, Malden filed it and I supported Malden. We won the lawsuit with Judge Rodenthal, she made a wise decision. And we went back to single-member districts and that's where I am now and I'm proud to serve to succeed and I hope to continue serving them.
What are some of your major concerns for your district and how will you seek to address those concerns if needed, if re-elected, excuse me?
Well, you know, there's always major concerns in a district. My district is further east and it's not as bad as some of the other districts. The South Districts are the newer district. It goes to economic, like you said, I've been in Pasadena a long time. I moved here in 1952 when I was 10 years old and then the city of Pasadena was a Shaw Street. And then the city of Pasadena was a Shaw Street. Then I moved to Harris and Southmore and Spencer. I've seen it grow. So the older homes in the older districts and the streets, it's, they need economic development. They need, that's the reason they need to spend money there. And especially the streets because what they do is they do major streets where you can see. But they, and all politicians do things where you can see it above the street, but they need water and sewer lines. Some of them have been there many administrations, 50, 60 years. And we need to take care of those streets if it's just asphalt or whatever because that's one thing people look at. They look at the streets when they come in the city and I'm talking about residents and they're terrible in some areas and it's shameful that they let the streets get that away.
So besides the street issues and the flooding, what other concerns, what other issues does District C have that you've seen over the years and that you still think need to be addressed?
Well, I'm knocking doors. When you knock doors, you find out a lot what's going on. And it's the same thing, speeding, they want a stop sign, they want a speed bump, you know, and things like that. Those are the major concerns when you, when you find out from the people. There's other major concerns, but I was talking about the sewer lines and we need economic development. But we've got some business out in District C, they're doing well. And, you know, they wanted to change all the ballparks to go to the convention center. Another administration, I stopped them where we could build a ballpark in the city with the neighborhoods. We spent $6 million on the ballpark. And I built a new soccer field. I saw the Hispanics, 600 of them wanted to play and they delayed it and I finally got it open. They said they couldn't get enough coaches, but that was wrong. They just wanted to delay it. So we got a beautiful soccer field in my district. But one thing has come to my point in the last few months, we've got more homeless people in my district. I've noticed that. And I count them, I see 10 to 15 and, you know, they've got mental problems, most of them. And I've talked to the chief of police and they're aware of it, but it's a problem where they can take them in, but they can't keep them. They have to release them. They need, we need to find some solution in Pasadena. It's minor now, but I don't want to get us to spread anything major because I have respect for the homeless, mental health and everything. But if it's creating a problem with the residents, then we've got a problem we've got to resolve and we really need to work on this one. And it's just sprung up in the last few months.
So let me ask you a follow-up question to this and, I mean, I guess I could have asked this of any of the candidates so far. There's all these needs that any city government faces and we see this here in Houston. All these needs and yet then you have to balance that with the income and the revenue that the city has on hand or can expect to get. How do we make those choices? How do we make those decisions? And how can we solve the problems that we see each city, especially Pasadena in this case, facing?
Well, I'm kind of a fiscal conservative on taxes. I don't want to waste money. And I watched the budget and they had a tax increase, but they didn't tell them that tax increase they were having, they're 5.6%. They didn't tell them the appraisal value of the home goes up 6%, so that's 11% increase. And I've been watching the state now that it's possibly going to pass, and the Senate's going to pass that 2.5% cap. If that is, you know, that's going to really restrict the citizen, but I see too much wasting going. For instance, they spent $200,000 to $300,000 on some lights, Christmas lights, you know, I voted no against it for Christmas. And I'm not against all that, but it's a priorities. They don't prioritize things. With that $200,000 or $300,000, we could have had a public transportation system in Pasadena. We've got grants, we had one. I thought the mayor was going to put in one, he was all for it, and then all of a sudden it shut down. I have, you know, reason to believe but why they did it, but I'm all for public transportation. They come in Pasadena, that's the first thing a business looks for is public transportation. And it helps elderly, you know, low-income students, everybody. And we could have one, but we don't. 156,000 people without a public transportation. It's sad.
Councilman, you referenced gerrymandering. Specifically, you talked about how decisions are made based on who's in power. Wanted to talk a little bit about the power of community. Baker Ripley and the League of Women Voters are committed to making sure that all Pasadena residents are involved and engaged in the civic process. Can you talk a little bit about what you have done or what you will do as a city councilman to ensure that you're creating a process allowing for neighbors in Pasadena, residents of Pasadena, to effect change and to realize the visions they themselves have for their respective neighborhoods?
Well, if you live in a district 69 years, you know a lot of people. You meet them at the store and what I do, I learn retail politics from my older brother. I'm kind to everybody and everybody appreciates hello, how are you, what do you need, this and that. And so you need communications and strength within. You need representatives that really believes in the people. The people are the greatest asset the city has ever had. But I'm disappointed because people don't seem to get interested. They don't come to council, but there's really not a lot of communications either, you know. They need more communication between the city for council. They do all it by law, this and that, but the average person out there does not know what's going on until election time.
So communication is something you think probably needs to be wrapped up a little bit?
On a daily basis with your district and your community, which I try to do.
Thank you.
Councilman, in recent years, we've seen an influx of young voters, but it's very difficult for young voters to show up to city elections. Everybody knows about the November elections, not as many people know about the May or April elections. I want to ask, what are some of the ways you would increase the young voter population as far as citywide elections? Or at least increasing the knowledge?
Increase their voter participation? Well, that's a good question, but I've seen so much about the millenniums and right now the city's going to redo a mall next door. And why? Is it ever, I don't want to risk taxpayers' money. We don't risk taxpayers' money. You know why the mall's going to fail? It's because young people don't go to malls anymore. You can read that in the paper. 4,000 malls have closed last year. And we need to spend tax dollars on things to get the youth to vote. But one thing I understand is communication is sports. I'm a big sports fan. I played baseball in high school and college and it's like the soccer field. Soccer field is growing and I'm as proud to build that. But education is the main thing about everything. And I was reading a paper by Thomason this morning in the Chronicle. San Antonio's got a program that they help the kids, well, they've got a high school education. The average is one female with one child and Houston is beginning to work the program. Pasadena needs to work a program. But they stay with those students and they pick the students that they think are going to work and thrive. And they help them with their bus transportation, food, tuition. And then majority of them that graduate, they actually double their salary, double their salary within five years, but they stay at the program. So those are the programs what the Pasadena's look at. We need to, in that way, you educate the millenniums, they have a better quality of life and they're able to succeed. That's what Pasadena's all about. When our family came there, we moved from West Texas. We came there for jobs. That's what it's all about now. It's opportunity to live the American way of life and I truly believe that.
What town in West Texas?
Abilene.
All right. I was just in Amarillo this past weekend. A little bit further north.
A little further north, yeah.
But I went to school at Tech in Lubbock, so, you know, it's a different world. And I understand why your parents moved here.
Yeah.
You know, one of the things that you brought up, and I think this is an important thing to note, you do see a way of doing things for people and yet being fiscally responsible. A lot of times, people think that if you vote this way or that way, it's because you don't like people, you're mean-hearted or, but you're saying is that you can do both. Is that what you try to do in your career is try to help people and yet do it in a responsible way?
Yes. What I say fiscally responsible because they've got some programs that I vote on because economic development's come in there, they got a 1% sales tax that they collect and they collect 13, 14 million dollars a year. And they sold $30 million worth of bond. They can sell bonds. But the economic development used to be where they put it in its structure, like streets, real estate, not real estate, sidewalks and water and sewer lines. That's what the other administrators did. But in the past several years, as Thomason said in the Houston Chronicle, AKA, it's nothing but graft. And investors come in there and they try to build projects on city land, but the key to all that is they build at least 50-year project on city land, they don't pay any avalanche taxes. It's not a fair adjustment for people, investors, and also that same way our contracts. They don't follow the Davis Bacon Act. I would like them to follow, pay the prevailing wage rate. They don't do that. And I'm working on that to create, make sure they pay the prevailing wage rate because it better the economic growth, they get a home, they get an education. I look for the steps that how people can benefit themselves.
I appreciate that. So in the couple of minutes that we have left, when I ask you a question, I'm asking every candidate. And although you've had a career in the district and as a representative of that district, why should people of C vote for you?
Well, my main thing is, I tell everybody, I'm honest and I follow the people. And that's truly how I feel. I don't have to look over my shoulder for anything after 24 years. I haven't gained anything, but I gained a lot of friends and some enjoyment by meeting people, but I really truly enjoy representing the people because they know my vote is going to be for the people, not for all the people, not just a certain few, but for all the people. And that's how I feel and that's how I vote.
Okay. Any final comments or questions, follow-up questions?
We hope that you got our invitation to Art of the Vote. I'm asking all the candidates. It's an event we're hosting at Cleveland Ripley, our Cleveland campus, Baker Ripley.
Yeah, I got that.
Wonderful. It's April 30th, 6:30 in Pasadena with, it's a partnership with the Museum of Fine Arts Houston and Pasadena Independent School District, so.
I've got a great organization out there and you do a lot of good. I appreciate that.
Thank you. We hope you can join us.
Yeah, I said I'd be there.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Councilman Harrison, thank you so much for being on the show and for asking us questions. I actually, I appreciate your long term there because you brought a lot of things that I hadn't thought about before and that's always good. I might ask the other candidates some of those questions too, follow-ups. You've educated me a little bit and I appreciate that. Maybe that's because you're from...
Thank you, sir. From Abilene?
Abilene.
Well, I love Texas Tech though. I'm from West Texas.
They got close.
And I was pulling for them that game. They did get close.
They did get very close.
They had it won.
They did. They did.
Thank you so much. Good luck on your election bid and we appreciate you for being on with us.
Thank you all for having me.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Hi, welcome to Conversations with the Candidates. I'm Gene Prost of the League of Women Voters of the Houston area. With me, Gracie Garsis from Baker Ripley House. And we also have Archie Gale from the University of Houston Downtown, the Honors Program. And we're asking candidates for Pasadena School, Pasadena City Council about their bid for the upcoming election. The general election, the big election, is going to be on May the 4th. And that's 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Go out and vote and if you would like to vote early, you can do that as well. Starts April 22nd and it runs through April the 30th. And again, the time's to vote, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And you don't have to go to a specific polling location this year. This is the first time Harris County has implemented a, I'm not sure what they call it.
Voting Center.
Voting Centers, is that you can go to a voting center where you are or near where you are and vote there. I don't want to make it sound like you can just like, well, here I am.
Go anywhere.
Vote right here. We're not there yet, but...
Vote for me a Facebook.
One day.
Yeah, I mean, and, you know, one of the things that we've been asking all of our candidates about is how do you get more people to vote? I think this is a way that we might start seeing better turnout. As we've talked about with the other candidates, is it's these smaller elections, I guess I should say, the non-presidential elections don't get as much turnout and sometimes you get as little as 25%, one in four of the electoral populace, those who can vote or registered to vote bother to do so. And that's a good number and usually it's much lower than that. So we want to encourage people to go out and vote. And we, you know, in the Houston area, we don't always look at the smaller cities like Pasadena and their elections, so we're very honored to have all the candidates here tonight. So all the candidates, not everyone could make it, of course, and so we do thank those who came out with us this evening at this time. We have candidate for District E, Cody Ray Wheeler.
All right. Thank you all so much for having me. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you for joining us. I'm going to start off by asking you the question we're asking everybody. Tell us about yourself. Tell us who you are and what brings you here.
Well, I am just a regular Pasadena guy, right? Grew up in Pasadena, moved there when I was six years old. My dad worked at the plants in Pasadena, Phillips 66. My mom worked at the Walmart. And we grew up a working-class family. My dad was a member of the USW, the Steelworkers Union, and he was involved, really involved with his union. So I remember growing up and having those conversations around the dinner table about, you know, wages and families and working families and the role that business and communities play together, right? And so I grew up, I guess, in a sense, politically conscious, even though I didn't maybe realize at the time because it was just kind of second nature in the way I grew up. But after graduating, I joined the Marine Corps, achieved a rank of sergeant, did two tours in Iraq, came back home, went to the University of Houston, got a degree in political science and really kind of just naturally felt, and I say naturally, just always found myself around, you know, campaigns and political issues. Before long, I wanted to serve and I saw there was a great need in Pasadena and that's how I'm here.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Cody Ray, thanks for joining, Councilman. Thanks for joining us. Always nice to see you. So you talk about your dad's work in the industry. I want to talk a little bit about that because there's a lot of opportunity in Pasadena, a lot of job opportunity. But oftentimes, and what we've seen through talking with neighbors at Baker Ripley, is that either people don't know about them or don't, they haven't obtained the skills that they need to actually be eligible for those job opportunities. Can you talk a little bit about what you have done or what you can do on city council to make sure that anybody in Pasadena who's interested in taking advantage of those job opportunities have the training that they need?
Yeah, so it's kind of a funny thing in Pasadena. We're, you know, we're right there on the port of Houston, you know, some of the most valuable real estate in the country. But in the northernmost district, District A of Pasadena, the median household income there is $34,000 a year. So these families are sitting right in the banks, right in the midst of all this economic power, all this wealth, and it just seems un... the midst of all this economic power, all this wealth, and it just seems unreachable to them. It's unattainable. Like, how do I get there? How do I get my family involved in this this process? And I think the city of Pasadena should and can play a huge role in making sure people get access to that income. And I think we do it in the way of economic agreements, economic development. Unfortunately, for a really long time, governments had gotten this idea that, well, economic development means giving tax abatements to big corporations. And that's it. Hey, we gave a big tax abatement, economic development area, because I'm happy, right? And I think we've been doing so much more than that. Most recently, the city of Pasadena gave, signed an eight-year deal, which is going to result in a $70 million tax abatement. We got no apprenticeship programs in return for that. We got no job guarantees for that. We got no safety standards for that. We got no environmental standards for that. So we got nothing in return, but we gave a $70 million tax abatement. And we pat ourselves on the back and say, hey, we did economic development. And I think we have to start incorporating those type of policies, those type of agreements into our policy. When we do give tax abatements, when we do try to attract companies, ensure that they're giving back to the community and they're being good neighbors.
Thank you.
I'd like to go back to your background in political science. I have a, I'm in college. I have a lot of political science friends and honors in the university. And they're always one of the first people to tell me about a rally or a, or when voting starts. And I'd like to ask you, what are some of the ways you would increase the young voter population? Because it's very difficult, or it's, the young voters, they know about November elections, but they don't know about May or April elections. I'd like to ask what what you would do to increase the young voter population?
Yeah, so I mean, I think it's really simple. And I think it just comes down to hard work. The first time I ran for office in Pasadena was 2013. And the district I represent, District E, about 22,000 people in it. And a lot of those are eligible to vote due to age and citizenship, but it's a good number of people. In 2011, there was 458 votes in that election. So 458 votes out of 22,000 people decided that election. And, you know, someone's going to say, this is unacceptable. There's just too few people deciding the outcome of the city. So we rolled our sleeves up, got out, we started knocking on doors, we created lists. And there's a lot of really good voters, there's a lot of young people, there's people that clearly like to be engaged in politics and elections, but they just don't know what's going on with the city. So we turned out 835 people the very next election. So we did see progress in that. And it really, I think it comes down to old-fashioned elbow grease, getting people out to vote. You know, one thing I've done, always done for the past six years now, the first two that every month, I host a free community breakfast. I do a robocall, invite everybody out. We go over the agenda. And that's just something I've done. But I really do think it boils down to candidates and city and government engaging all different parts of the city and different demographics of the city to get people more involved.
So let me ask you, and I know you've talked about this a little bit already, describe your district, and tell me what you think some of the major issues are.
Well, I think the biggest thing, and what the city government does, they can do a lot of things. They can do infrastructure. And of course, I think that's very basic, and we need to do better at that. We have to do better with our streets, our drainage and our roads. But we talked about initially, giving families access to economic opportunity. I think once you do that, I think everything else begins to fall in place. If you give someone a good-paying job, or an education, or access to their city government, I really think that things begin to fall in place. And I don't think we're doing enough to make sure that that next generation is set up. So we need to do better working with industry, labor unions, community colleges, to make sure that the next generation, and even even people that are maybe older in age, have opportunity to get back to work. And then there are things, for example, Metro, Kansas City of Pasadena said, hey, we received a federal grant. It's going to cover 80% of the cost of a bus route. Pasadena, six bus routes to Pasadena that will take kids to school and connect Baytown and La Porte and different parts. Seven out of the eight council members approved it. It was less than, I think, 0.4% of our budget, very small cost to the city. And it's gone up to the administration. It's just set there. So now we don't have a bus service in Pasadena because it's it's sitting there in City Hall. We haven't tackled things like payday lending. We haven't tackled environmental concerns. So I think there are economic issues. I think there's transportation issues. I think there's environmental issues. And so there's really these fundamental things that we can do in Pasadena that we could be doing better, that I really feel would help working families.
So let me ask you a follow-up question to this. And other people have talked about this, too. Why do you think you've seen some inertia on some of these infrastructure-type economic development measures?
In the city of Pasadena? I think we've been pounding the hammer. You know, when I first was elected, that was one of the main reasons I ran, is that you don't have to be an expert on the city of Pasadena or a budget expert to figure out, hey, one side of the city looks really, really nice, and one side is crumbling, right? And so that's one thing we've been trying to do. And I think that it has drummed up enough political pressure to force the hand that we got to start doing some things. And since I've been on council, there's been a new fire station in District E, Randolph Road, there's been Garner, we're working on Richie right now. There is an effort, and there is more focus being put on development in North Pasadena. And what I tell people all the time is, listen, it didn't get this way overnight, and it's not going to get fixed overnight, but we have to start working towards that that goal.
Wanted to build on my last question, especially since you talk about like giving families access to this economic opportunity that exists in Pasadena. So about 35% of Pasadena residents do not have a high school diploma. And moreover, when Baker Ripley has had these conversations with students, adults, people who are looking for new jobs, new careers, a lot of them have not been aware or familiar with the community college structure, specifically San Jacinto, as great of an organization, institution that it is. We've been at Baker Ripley looking to expand programming that creates this education pipeline. So it takes students or adults from their high school classes or adult education into the workforce. So you talk about this access, and that's exactly what we're trying to accomplish. But how do we do that? Like, are there partnerships in addition to the city and Baker Ripley, perhaps local organizations that maybe we haven't tapped into, public-private partnerships? What does that look like for you as a council member?
Yeah, so I definitely think there's partnerships. I work a lot with labor unions, have a lot of friends with labor unions, and there, so many of them are looking for workers, especially in the areas of plumbing and pipe fitting. They're using different types of visas. A lot of these plants are making different types of visas for bringing people over from from the southeast to do some of these jobs. And we have people right here at home that could be doing those jobs if they just, you know, were able to gain access. So I think the city could partner and help promote, could partner with San Jac, help promote, partner with Baker Ripley, partner with school districts. But it has to be an extremely proactive measure. Get into these schools, get into people that are principals and assistant principals, counselors, that families trust. And I do think PISD is moving in that direction. I'm good friends with the Associate Superintendent Gloria Egos, and she has talked about that. She has met with different organizations, with Paul Puente. And they are moving in that direction because there's so much work out there, and there's so much opportunity. But we got to make sure that that our kids are being trained and having access to that.
Gloria is a member of our Baker Ripley Cleveland Campus Advisory Committee, so we're hoping to do more with her.
Right.
Thank you.
I have a question about economic development. I believe small businesses are a large part of economic development. They're part of, a large part of keeping cities' funds within the city. What is the state of small businesses in Pasadena?
I mean, I think the small businesses are in a good state. They're strong. But we're not seeing a lot of closures. We have a lot of good opportunity and a lot of small business like that. And and that's one of the things when when we gave, we've given a few tax abatements. We gave one, a large one to the poor. We gave a $1.3 million abatement to Restaurant Depot. We gave another, I believe, $1.3 million to Emerson, which had 25 billion in revenue. And so I think that I've had, you know, small business owners in Pasadena call me like, hey, we can use some of this economic development as well, you know. So I think that we have to, economic development just isn't large corporations. Economic development just isn't one or two people. It has to be, you have to look at the whole, the whole landscape of how we develop. And I think that one thing that we're lacking in Pasadena is we're lacking business districts. So we're the second-largest city in the United States without any type of zoning. And so if you put in some type of business, and then here comes a metal recycling center right next to your coffee shop, that hurts, you know? Or you buy a home, and then here comes a pipe yard or next year. And there's nothing wrong with, you know, a pipe yard, but I think that everything has its place and timing. So I think we have to look, when we're doing economic development, to have everyone sit at the table, not just a few. And then come with a plan. How do we want to grow as a city? How do we want to develop? And what do we want Pasadena to look like once we're not here anymore, maybe 60, 80, 100 years from now? What do we want Pasadena to be? And we got to start thinking long-term like that.
So you speak of vision. Let me ask you, what what is your vision for Pasadena in 20, 30, 60 years?
So I believe that Pasadena is, it's a working-class city. It's a blue-collar city. And I'm proud of that fact. I know that Pasadena is not going to be the the River Oaks of Harris County. And so I look at a place where I want to keep Pasadena what it's been for so long. It's a place where you can come, you can get a job, you can work, you can raise your family, you can send them to school. And when you make your, for most of us, our largest investment, we want our lifetime, our home, that that home is protected, that the city is doing everything it can to make sure that it increases in value, and you leave the next generation something behind it. Because what we don't want to see is people invest, and then the roads crumble around it, the infrastructure crumbles around it, and we see people leaving the city because there's not access to opportunity or their investments aren't being protected. And so I think that's my biggest thing, is ensuring that Pasadena remains that place where you can come and get a foothold and do better and do more for the next generation.
So, great vision for 20 years. In the very near future, though, one of the the hot topics is census 2020.
Right.
So as you know, that comes with, the accurate count, complete count comes with number of congressional seats you get, electoral college votes, a lot of money potentially going into states based on the count and the population. Can you share what you hope to do in terms of making sure that every single Pasadena resident is counted, so that Pasadena can get its fair share of funds?
Yeah, so I mean, I think that is a really great question. And I know that the county is being really proactive in this because it does been, it has so many ramifications, right? Because for federal funding, for state funding, for for election and everything else. So I think it's important, if we don't get an accurate count, it will mean that Pasadena gets left out. And we don't want to do that. So I think we need to work with council, we need to work with the mayor, to make sure that if there's anything that we can do to promote that, whether that's opening up our facilities, whether that's actually, we have a good neighborhood grant program and neighborhood network, we can utilize those resources. And then if it comes down to it, get out and just good old-fashioned knocking on doors to make sure that we do get an accurate count, because that affects, that can be millions of dollars down the road, in getting an accurate count.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have to ask, earlier before we started, you mentioned you were in a band.
Yeah.
Just be honest about that band and the members.
Yeah, yeah. So, so my dad, my dad played guitar, and he grew up playing guitar. And if you'd asked him when he was a young kid, he was going to be a rock star. But, you know, I guess, life happened, and, you know, he got a nine-to-five. But he taught all of us, I have two brothers and a sister, and he taught all of us how to play an instrument. I play guitar. My older brother plays guitar. My younger brother plays bass, my sister plays the drums. So we've been, we've been playing since we're yeh-hah, nine years old. It's funny. And then, you know, it's really kind of more of a hobby, but we do play every so often.
What's the band's name?
I was saying, it's like Selena Quintanilla.
The name of the band is Dallin County. We're all, actually, we're all born in the Texas Panhandle, in Dalhart, Texas. And so we named the band Dallin County.
That is the Panhandle.
You can't go much further north before you're in Oklahoma or New Mexico. Yeah, yeah.
Same road.
It is, yeah. So so you know, there's not a whole lot out there.
Well, there's a lot of cows.
Lot of cows.
And dirt.
Yeah. It's fun, though. It's a good time. We love going back there and hanging, spending time with family. And it's just, it's, you know, kind of a magical place that, you know, you get away from it all, the hustle and bustle of the city.
So what kind of music is it?
Yeah. We do a little, we do country, the hono, classic rock. I mean, we'll do a little bit of everything, you know? We're not afraid to dabble.
You ever play any shows?
Yeah, we did most recently AFL-CIO. We do, we do all kinds of little little events here and there. But with elections and City Hall and work, it does make it difficult to get time all the time.
I was going to say with the name like Cody Ray Wheeler, that's the perfect name for a band, right? Like, American Idol.
Yeah, yeah.
One of these days. In the few minutes we have left, I'm going to, back to a serious question. You're talking to voters. Now, you're already an incumbent right now. But you're up, you have opposition. Why should a voter, when they go into that booth, why should they pull your name?
Well, I think people who follow the city of Pasadena and followed the struggles over over the last, you know, half decade, know that, or feel that, I truly do believe in fighting for the citizens of Pasadena. You know, when I got elected, it wasn't long thereafter that we had to go through a voting rights lawsuit. And, you know, I did whatever I could, adjourned the support that we needed to beat that back. And ultimately, it was defeated in federal court. When it comes to to making sure that our district is not left out of decisions, they'll know that. And, you know, I'm independent. I don't have business or any other type of interest with the city. I'm really just there to make sure that our citizens get the best representation they can, and working families get the best representation they can. And I think that people see that, and they have access to me. You know, I've always tried to provide openness to me with my breakfast or community engagement, or putting my cell phone number, email, all out there on the table. And so I think that people do appreciate that.
Yeah, one question. And we've asked this, and people have talked about this, this idea of transparency or communication. How do you, how does anybody increase communication? Because it always seems that there's a disconnect, and people don't really pay attention to local politics. And so how does a, in your view, how should a council member work to increase that communication?
I mean, I think just like that. So when like, when I do a phone call or a mass phone call, robocalls, they call, I use my personal number. So when they call me back, they, you know, they get a missed call from number, they call me back, they get to their council member. When I promote my breakfast, come talk to me. Whether you have a complaint about me, or want to tell me I'm doing a great job, whatever, come talk to me. And I think that using social media, you know, I know it sounds silly, but starting a Facebook page, and if a lot of people like your Facebook page, you know, even even tonight, coming out here and speaking about this, sharing the link on my Facebook page, whatever, what have you, and just trying to get, it's, there's not a magic button. If there was, we would have, everybody would be doing it, right? But I really think it's just a matter of putting in the time and making yourselves self-accessible to constituents.
Anything else?
No, I think, did you have anything, Archie?
We asked about the band. That was the real.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's what voters also care about, is how good you play guitar. And so.
Will you play at any rallies or anything like that?
Yeah, we do a few things. And then, because we have the equipment, like, I DJ. And so I think when Betho came to town, I was the DJ when he did. So it's just little little things like that. It's just, you know, it's silly stuff, but it's fun. If I get free, like, plate of barbecue, then I'll usually do it.
I would, too. Cody Ray Wheeler, thank you so much. You're the candidate for District E. And we wish you, just like we do all the candidates, all the success. And thank you for coming on and visiting with us.
Thank you all.
And sharing your thoughts and a little bit more about yourself, and even a couple of fun questions.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you very much.
Here we go.
Hi, welcome to Conversations with the Candidates. I'm Jean Price with the League of Women Voters of the Houston area. And with me, we have a couple of other people who are going to ask questions of candidates for Pasadena City Council. We have Gracie Garcia with Baker Ripley House. Or Baker Ripley. I still call it House, but it's, the name has changed a little.
Everybody knows Ripley House, but officially our organization is Baker Ripley. Ripley House is one of our centers.
And you have a center in Pasadena too, right?
We do, so it's Baker Ripley Cleveland Campus on Fairmont, 720 Fairmont. Yes, and we're actually expanding out there. So we're really excited about this.
And also with us tonight, we have a student from the University of Houston downtown, Archie Gale. And Archie is an honors student and you're a junior this year?
I am, and the poetry editor for the By Your Review.
And you're creative. Creative writing.
Creative writing major, yes, sir.
Okay, so very talented. Archie has been a, a great student and always willing to volunteer. And we're thank, thank you for representing UHD tonight. I represented, but not publicly here. Just kidding. They may not want to claim me for this. We're interviewing candidates and we invited all the candidates for Pasadena City Council. Some of them had other obligations, some of them had, we weren't able to contact with them. But we have a good number of candidates that have come in. And I've really learned a lot tonight about Pasadena. And I have to admit, you know, I, I know roughly where Pasadena is, but I've learned much more about it. And tonight, our last candidate is Lori Laird, and she is running in District H. Welcome to Houston Media Source, the chat, the conversations with the candidates. Lori, I want to ask you some questions that we've asked everybody else. And what we want to start off is, is tell the viewers and tell us who you are and your background.
Happily. First of all, thank you very much for having me here tonight. This is a great opportunity and I really appreciate anytime we have organizations that want to do outreach to voters and to members of the public. I think it's a very important thing to do and, and I appreciate being involved in that. Who am I? That's a very complicated question. I'm a mother, I have seven children. I have two, I have six boys and one girl, one son who served in the Navy and one who's currently in the Marine boot camp. He graduates May 3rd, the day before the election happens. So that's very exciting for us. Love my kids, they're awesome. I have a wonderful husband and I have lived in Pasadena. I grew up in Pasadena, it's my hometown. I'm an attorney. Prior to that, I was a police officer for about 12 years in the city of Baytown. I served as a patrol officer, as a patrol sergeant, as a media relations officer, and I was on SWAT team as a hostage negotiator. And so I've had a pretty diverse background as an attorney. I'm a Texas super lawyer. I've been named to the top 100 litigators list. And this year I was added to the top women attorneys in Texas. I received that honor this year as well. So I keep very busy. I'm a violinist, I play in orchestra, and I'm on the board for the Pasadena Philharmonic Orchestra along with my husband. And it's my therapy, I really enjoy that.
You're a real polymath.
Indeed, a true Renaissance woman, indeed.
My gosh, so, so you would go from arresting people or negotiating a hostage standoff to playing the violin? And now you're an attorney?
Yes, sir, I am.
And a mother of seven.
And a mother of seven.
Have a busy life.
That's quite, that's quite a bit.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for sharing that with us. I think we're going to ask you some follow up questions on that later on.
All right.
So we'll go to Gracie right now.
So first of all, no bias at all, but I am super excited that you are a woman.
I am.
The only woman we've interviewed tonight. So kudos to you.
Thank you.
For stepping up. I love, love seeing women take a stand and want to try to put themselves out there. I commend anybody who wants to run for office. It's a challenging experience, but it's a learning experience. So congratulations on taking that step. You have done quite a bit. I'm a mother of two, so having seven kids, I don't quite know how you've been able to do all of this. But everything that you've done really speaks to the endless possibilities that exist for our students, for neighbors across Pasadena.
Absolutely.
So many opportunities. I really want to talk about the non-traditional things that might be happening or the opportunities. In 2017, the Houston Chronicle published an article that stated, "Texas Entrepreneurs Are Both Younger and Older Than the National Average." What do you see, what role do you see entrepreneurs playing in the Pasadena economy? And what can you do if you were to be elected on city council to actually provide the resources that those entrepreneurs need to thrive?
Well, one of the things, first of all, entrepreneurs are such an awesome lifeblood for any city and especially a city like Pasadena, which has a diverse group of individuals living there. I myself am an entrepreneur, having, having my own small business as well. And so I have had larger business and then scaled down to a smaller business. So I certainly understand the special needs that entrepreneurs have. Now, the city can't really do a whole lot funding wise for entrepreneurs, as I understand the role of city council. But certainly there are many things that could be done, for example, through the Economic Development Corporation, that could be done to make the process easier for those who want to be entrepreneurs, providing information, maybe some fast track things, taking some of the roadblocks to becoming an entrepreneur and a small business person out of the way. So I think there are lots of opportunities that maybe have not been a priority in the past that could certainly come to the forefront to aid citizens in Pasadena that want to be entrepreneurs. And we have so many, it, it's really interesting, in my district, it's one of the largest districts. And we have folks with all different kinds of businesses. And I know we heard earlier, one of the councilmen had mentioned about restaurants and things of that nature. There's one restaurant in my district where the owner, it's, it's a family that owns it. And so we've got the oldest brother who primarily runs the restaurant, the second brother who is developing intellectual property and doing that there in the city. And, and I have discussed with him ways that perhaps Pasadena could also look to the future in helping entrepreneurs in intellectual property development and more of an IT kind of basis. Not that I expect we'll become Silicon Valley overnight, but you know, the opportunities are there for people like that. And we have, we have genius level folks that reside in our city. And I think that's often overlooked. The third brother is an attorney, an immigration attorney. And so they take their combined skills and they do various jobs there in the city of Pasadena. And I think it's, it's fabulous. And I think anything that council can do, that city government can do within the mandates and prohibitions that kind of exist there to help build businesses would only benefit the city in the long run.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
As, as the others have acknowledged, you're incredibly prolific. You have your, you have experience in public transportation, Houston's art department, law enforcement, and you really, you're, you have so much experience. I'd really like to know, what are some of the major concerns of your district and how will you seek to address those concerns if you're elected?
That's a really good question. I have been on the campaign trail since I made the announcement, which was just about the end of the registration period. So I have been at this probably less time on, on like the campaign part of it than other folks have, certainly less than the incumbents who, who were ramping up for reelection prior to that. But it's been such a learning experience for me. I have knocked on, I don't know, well over a thousand doors, probably thousands of doors, and had the opportunity to visit with lots of different people in our city. And in doing so, I've been able to find out not only the things that I knew were problems, but things that I didn't know were problems. And then things that aren't really problems, but could be a way to make our city a better place to live. And I'll give you some examples. Personally, prior to my experience as running as a candidate, I experienced the drainage issues that we have in our city during Hurricane Harvey. In my part of my district, we were flooded in for several days. Water came all the way up in our garage, all the way to my back door, all the way to my front door. Fortunately, we were blessed enough, water didn't get in our house. Other residents in Pasadena weren't as lucky. However, I did lose two cars in, in the hurricane, in the flash flooding there. So these kinds of problems, I already knew existed, drainage issues, sidewalk issues, things like that. But knocking on doors and talking to people, I've found lots of other issues that haven't been addressed in my district. For example, part of our district includes an area over near the NASA area. And there's a little enclave of retired folks that make up probably, I'd say 85 to 90% of that neighborhood. After speaking with several of the folks there, I found out that multiple people had tripped and fallen on, on bad sidewalks. In fact, one had to go to the emergency room and had an extended stay due to that, along with like some handicap access ramps up to the sidewalks that were in need of repair. One gentleman took me by the hand, literally, and took me over to show me these things. And, and I had to agree with him. I, I don't know why they haven't been addressed. And certainly things like that are important. Other issues in my district, I'm sure everybody's, if, if you're not familiar with Pasadena, you've certainly heard that Space Center is, is a street that we have in Pasadena. And originally, when I was a kid, Space Center was like a two lane roadway. And so the traffic congestion there, as you can imagine, wasn't anything like it is now that it's become a major thoroughway in our city. And the residents that live along that area have severe noise issues due to the increased traffic that's happened over the years, they could really use barriers. And kind of to the last point that I was making, little changes I've heard from people that they want in our parks and green spaces and things that really wouldn't cost a lot of money just for someone to take the time to do. For example, there is a gentleman who lives over in Brookwood subdivision in our, in our district, and he's got a pickleball mission. Now, if you don't know what pickleball is, pickleball is a, it, it's an activity, I've never played it myself, but my mother plays it and she is really into this. Pickleball is apparently something kind of like tennis and it's an activity, it's a physical sport and, and people love it. Well, there's a gentleman who really wants to make that a mission. He says that it is an excellent thing, especially to help seniors' health and fitness, and it's an excellent socialization tool. So it allows people to get together and spend time and, and also to help stay fit. And the only thing it would take in order to allow people to have these in our parks is just painting some lines on the already existing tennis courts in the places we have them. So those are just a few examples. I could give you a lot more, but I don't know that we have that much time.
I have one follow up question.
You've got to ask.
Is this a pickleball question?
Yeah.
Please do.
I'm not sure I'm qualified to answer the advanced pickleball questions, but I'll do my best.
Is a pickle involved in pickleball?
You know, I did ask that question and they told me it was no big deal.
It is not. It's a lot like squash. Or which is another, why, I don't know why these.
Vegetables are coming up, right? Indeed.
But it's, or, or what is it, racquetball.
Right.
Except it's a much lower impact.
So you've played?
No, but we have a former, former UHD colleague.
Oh, yes.
He's retired and apparently plays pickleball weekly.
There you go.
You know, we're gonna have to go try it out.
Yeah, and so now we all need to go out and try pickleball.
Yes.
And if I am fortunate enough to get elected, I'll get those lines painted and we can all meet on the court in Pasadena.
So as a former, I mean, I'm amazed, I always tell people I've had 25 jobs in my past and they think I'm crazy or bragging. I'm not. But as a former police officer, you also had a perspective on the city and, and were you in Pasadena?
I was not. And my police experience was in Baytown, right across. Yeah, right across the bridge.
But it's in the area.
Absolutely.
So you, I mean, and I have a younger brother who's a police officer as well in San Antonio and he has a lot of insight into the city and how it works.
Oh, of course.
So from your perspective as a police officer, what are some of the concerns in that area? And we can put up a map of the Pasadena area and it's, now you were in Baytown, but you said that your district is one of the larger districts in there. And can you describe your district a little bit? And what are some of the, the concerns for safety that people have in that area?
Well, I would say the concerns for safety, talking to people in my district, probably recently, whether it's real or it's perceived, is folks believe that there's an increase in crime. And I was surprised how many people really have reported that to me when I'm out here talking to folks. Some other issues involving that are on a county level. And folks have talked to me about problems that they see more on the county and state level, which, you know, as city council, there's not a whole lot you can do. But what you could certainly do in those issues are educate people. The one thing that I noticed, I kind of monitor social media a bit when I can in my spare time, if you believe I have any. I look and kind of see what people are talking about. And like, people have a basic misunderstanding of how the justice system works. People have a basic misunderstanding of the separation of authority, so to speak. What is in the hands of county officials versus what belongs in the hands of city officials? And I think some public outreach campaigns could help with that. Now, aside from those kind of big, big kind of idea issues, to particular issues involving crime and safety, I've had people who tell me, I've talked to several people who are involved in their local community watch in their neighborhoods. And, and I'm so impressed and amazed by people who volunteer their time to be on these community watch groups. I think it's a very important aspect for, for groups and neighborhoods to be able to have that information and to have a touchstone, have someone who's willing to put in the time and effort for that. And I've found that people who are involved in those efforts have told me that they're having a more difficult time getting information from the police department about crime information that they want to disseminate to their groups. And I think previously as a media relations officer, part of what I did was every day was to do press releases, to put information out there as to what crime had been reported in the city, things of that nature. And I noticed that Pasadena doesn't have a system similar to that. I think that's something that could greatly benefit not only these individual watch groups, but any person who is concerned with crime or justice for that matter in their area. And it's a good way to kind of see what a great job our police department is doing. And maybe some of these perceptions that, that may or may not be correct could be corrected if they actually had access to that information.
So on that note of community awareness and information, we've talked with a couple of candidates about the power of community. Baker Ripley and the League of Women Voters are very committed to engaging residents across Harris County, but specifically tonight, Pasadena residents in the civic process. And he talked about that a little bit, about how people can get involved. What can you do as a city council member or what more can you do than, than is already being done to ensure that, that you're creating a process that allows every neighbor, every resident to affect change and to realize the visions they have for their respective neighborhoods?
Yeah, I've thought a lot about that. Part of the reason I got involved was I saw, I saw things going on in the city that I didn't like. I saw things that I thought perhaps I could do better and I could bring ideas to the table that maybe other folks didn't have. And part of visiting with folks, I've seen that people do feel disenfranchised, might be a strong word, but they feel disconnected from their community. And they're really surprised even when I knocked on doors, oh my gosh, nobody has ever came and knocked on my door. It's so cool that somebody has come to talk to me. And so I've given that a lot of thought. Probably what I would like to do is to try to set up some kind of, for lack of a better word, an ambassadorship, where you have neighborhood ambassadors, individuals who want to be involved in providing communication to and from, being a conduit with their local government and with the council. I think it would be a, a very productive activity because so many people are really interested. And a lot of people can't make city council meetings because they have to work or they have mobility problems. There's lots of different reasons why people can't be or don't want to be more involved in the everyday government. But they are very concerned about the decisions that local government makes and how it affects their everyday life. So I think that for me, my thoughts were if I could set up a series of ambassadors, people who could visit with me and let me know their concerns, then I could do whatever I could. could do whatever I could within, you know, the scope of my authority, of course, to help them. I've, even, even during the campaign, I've visited with people that had problems that they had either tried to contact someone, a council member in the past, or they tried, they reached out to the wrong government official because they didn't know who to talk to. So another issue I think would be a bit of a community awareness, where we could let folks know, hey, if you've got a problem and it falls in one of these categories, these, this is where you might want to start to try to get help. If it falls in one of these categories, this is where you might want to start. And I think as a City Council person, you're the frontline person, kind of like being a patrol officer. If something happens, they come and flag you down, says something bad has happened. And so I feel as a City Council person, being accessible to these folks in my district and letting them know, hey, even if I'm not the answer, maybe I can help you get the answer. And I like that idea of being able to communicate directly with them. In fact, even, even now, I've set up an action line. I have an 800 number. It's 8444 Lori, which is real easy to remember, where folks can call me. And I have had some folks reach out to me with issues. I've had people run and flag me down in my car because they see the signs on my car, and they say, hey, we have a problem. And I'll tell you a kind of a funny one. One person had called, and she said she's called the city several times to complain at the mosquito control. Now, originally, when she first started telling me this story, I'm like, who doesn't want mosquito control? These things get the size of, you know, small chickens. We don't, you know, we need to control this mosquito population. But she was telling me that the problem was, is that the times that the, the spraying was happening was early enough in the evening where so many people were out in the neighborhood, and her husband had actually gotten like huge doses of being sprayed. And the people who were administering this, this pesticide didn't, you know, like hit the off button when they're running past a jogger on the side of the road. So you, I mean, the problems are really varied, and you hear some very interesting stories. So I could, you know, I could tell you all kinds of crazy stories, but that one I thought was particularly interesting because that one has a really easy solution, I think.
My gosh.
I have a question about jobs, specifically jobs in the oil industry. Pasadena is home to many oil industry jobs.
Right.
And what, if any, role do you think the City Council can play in helping Pasadena residents obtain the necessary training and credentials to apply for these oil industry jobs?
Well, we're very fortunate in Pasadena, not only with access to industry and those industry jobs that are, that are there in our community, but we have great educational resources around us. You may not know, but San Jacinto College has recently opened a brand-new petrochemical and technology and engineering facility there on their campus. And not too long ago, I attended the ribbon-cutting event for the Millwrights and Carpenters Union that is also in Pasadena. These are great resources. I think the city has a lot of opportunities to partner with these groups to try to get them to help us with individuals who might be interested in those kinds of donations. And we also have a, you know, a technology high school as well. So being able to reach out to those people, people who aspire to work in those industries, and work with a strong collaboration and partnership with these educational resources to help folks get those jobs.
So we have a few minutes left in, in this conversation, and I wanted to ask you why you chose to run with all the other things that you've done. And I guess this kind of dovetails into the next question, is why should someone watching in your district, District H, say I should vote for Lori Laird?
Okay. Well, the reason I decided to run, I grew up in Pasadena, and like many other folks who get an interest in local politics, I was educated in Pasadena schools. I attended Sam Rayburn High School. I went to San Jacinto College. I went to University of Houston Clear Lake, and then went on to graduate school elsewhere because Pasadena doesn't have a graduate school. Otherwise, I probably would have been there for that. It's my hometown. I grew up there. My husband grew up there as well. Have a very special place in my heart for the city. I feel like I bring a different skill set to the table than other folks who are currently on council have. And I think that I can bring some unique ideas to the table. And I just, I really believe in community service and in volunteerism. My entire life, I have spent volunteering on various boards and activities. I was a volunteer EMT for years. I do, I know, it's crazy. But when I see a need, I try to fill it, and that's kind of what I do. And so, and the years that I spent as a volunteer EMT were awesome. It was, it was a great opportunity to be able to help people in medical crisis, and it was a really great opportunity. And I find that every time I volunteer, get involved in any organization, not only am I able to help others, but I benefit from it personally, too. I make the greatest connections. And it's, it's just really an amazing opportunity to be able to help people solve problems. And that's what I do for a living. And that's what I did as a police officer, helping people solve problems, is what I do as a lawyer. I'm a fierce advocate. I'm very good at being an advocate. And I think I can bring that to the people of my district and take their problems and advocate for solutions at the City Council level.
Lori Laird, thank you very much. I appreciate all of your insight, and especially the experience that you bring.
Thank you.
A very multifaceted background. Good luck for District H's elections, and we wish you all the best. I'm Gene Proce for the League of Women Voters, and I want to thank my partners in this, Baker Ripley, Grace Garcia. And thank you so much for joining us.
Absolutely.
And Archie Gale, University of Houston Downtown. And I want to thank all of the other UHD honor students who are helping in the background. And they weren't on camera tonight, but we want to thank them, Alfred Maldonado, Amy Soto, and Carlos Huajardo, and all the other candidates from Pasadena City Council. We wish you all the best of luck, and thank you for joining us this evening.